In compliance with Chapter 231, Public Bill of 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting is provided in a Notice of January 8, 2018, and said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star ledger on January 18, 2018, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Flags will be put, please.
I am glad that I am the United States of America and consider Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I call this committee?
Mrs. Valsama.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Here.
Mr. Corra. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Schillerer.
Here.
Ms. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Carticella.
Here. Can we have approval of minutes with... Craig Morris, approve of minutes.
Second.
All on paper? Any correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
Okay, so we're gonna start off... Um, I'm gonna start off with a board update, uh, then we're gonna flow into the superintendent's report and then move through on the, uh, on the agenda. So our, our goal this evening is to bring the public an update, uh, since the last board meeting of 8/27 of 2018. We've updated the referendum portion of our website to include new information regarding the upcoming referendum on November 6th. On September 4th, 2018, the Nutley Board of Education held a special meeting to approve the ballot questions, and the county has received our request to include the questions on the ballot. These ballot questions are available on our website. This November, the Nutley community will have the opportunity to provide the Nutley Board of Education direction on the long-term needs of the district. The December 2017 referendum was presented as a single question to cover all of the district needs and expanding its footprint. As we discussed from many of the town halls, website, and social media, we provided a community, the community, a 15 to 20-year solution which would create additional classroom space and remove trailers from the elementary schools. This would have allowed three very important advances for our children. It would have provided the safest learning environment for our youngest learners at the elementary level. The additional classroom space would reduce the pressure on overall class size that we are encountering district-wide. With the expansion of the middle school, we would further reduce spacing pressures at the elementary by bringing sixth grade to the middle school. Our sixth-grade team model pilot at our elementary schools last year and this year show benefits to our students academically. The multipurpose space at both Washington and Yanacor provides a much-needed open space for lunch sessions, physical education, and largely learning areas. The 2018 referendum has been revised to allow the community two considerations when they vote on November 6th. Question 1 would allow the district to bond for the funding needed to provide only instructional space. That would include classrooms at both Washington and Yanacor elementary schools. This addition will eliminate trailers and bring students back into the main buildings, providing the safest educational environments for our students. As many are aware, the district since 2004 has invested in our infrastructure to provide secure entrances at all of our district schools. Question 1 will also provide funding to expand the middle school and increase the educational experience of our sixth grade, and provide physical education space which cannot be supported in the current facility once the sixth grade returulates to the ministry. Last, the funding will also support renovations to the high school to create additional STEAM and STEM classes, as well as smoke and destruction areas for students. For those community members who vote in favor of question 1, on November 6th, we'll also have the opportunity to vote question 2, which would allow the funding to complete the multipurpose spaces at both Washington and Yanacor, and fund a new media center at the front of the high school. After two democratic reports, several years of planning, and reviews by two superintendents, we continue to see evidence supporting the solutions we brought forward to the Nutley community. We still believe that all of the components of the 2017 referendum strengthen our ability to shape well-educated students, enhance the culture and traditions of this community, and increase the overall value of Nutley, and continue to provide opportunities for future families to enjoy all that this community has to offer. I want to thank you for the time, and that covers the board update report. We're gonna turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Julie Blazer.
So, welcome. Good evening. So glad to see so many of you here. Welcome to the new school year again. Some of you have already heard most of what I'm gonna say, so bear with me. We were supposed to be introducing our student representative to the board, Zohar Ahmed. Zohar is a senior at Nutley High School. He is our student council president, and as part of our tradition, he will serve as the voice of the students here on the Board of Education. Hopefully, he'll be with us at the next board meeting, and he can tell you a little bit more about himself. He's involved in a number of endeavors at the high school and in the community, and we certainly welcome Zohar joining us and sharing his perspective. We did have a very strong opening to the new school year, including professional learning for all of our staff and administration. That was on topics of suicide prevention, reading and writing workshop, foundations. Tomorrow, we have our first mentoring meeting for those working with our newest staff members, and again, we don't do this without everybody's support. You'll hear me say that often, and I'll say it again tonight. We already have a number of activities underway with the football home opener last weekend, the debut of the new band uniforms, woo! And later this week, our students from Lincoln and Spring Garden Schools are heading to camp at Fairview Lakes. On Sunday, September 23rd, I'll be leading the Farmer's Market Walk and Talk. We kick off at 8:15 a.m., thank you Ian, and I invite everybody to join me. The past two years, we've had a whole wide range of people walking. It's a lot of fun to go through the parks, a whole variety of questions, and I think we've had a lot of fun, too. Elementary Back to School Night is Tuesday, September 25th. The John H. Walker Middle School holding their Back to School Night on Thursday, September 27, and Nutley High School have their open house on Thursday, October 4th, and of course, we hope to see everybody there with us. As I said, the next part of my comments are from my opening day speech to the staff. Since we as a community are also kicking off the new school year, I was hopeful that it would be meaningful to all of you in the audience and all of you at home. And again, we have a lot of teachers that have heard this. It is written for our staff. It was written by me to acknowledge the incredible work and how much everybody goes above the yon, and to acknowledge a little bit the times that were ill. So, I saw a film this summer, a documentary. The marketing line was Radical Kindness at a Time When Public Kindness Is Scarc. And, as you know, I found it so moving and so transformative, I wanted everybody to see it. And what I'd really love to do is get the rights and play it on the district website and TV station all day, but that's probably not gonna happen. No speeches, just letting the message speak for itself. The movie is called Won't You Be My Neighbor? And for some of you, you know right away that we're talking about Mr. Rogers. For many of us, Mr. Rogers was among our first teachers from 1968 to 2001, and what he tried to teach us, we would now call emotional literacy. Things we talk about like emotional intelligence and mindfulness. He taught every single subject, every single lesson with intention. And while the nation changed around him, Mr. Rogers stood firm in his beliefs about the importance of protecting childhood, that in a time of often distressing meanness and division, we should remember how much we need each other, and to realize that neighborliness is an underrated virtue. Mr. Rogers' program took place in a neighborhood, a small town, probably not, much unlike Nutley, a place where he stopped in, spoke to the postman, to Officer Clemmons, where problems were not glossed over or ignored, but worked out patiently, conscientiously, every day, from one day to the next. It's a place where people can agree to disagree and look at the greater good. Mr. Rogers acknowledged anger, fear, and a lot of other kinds of hurts that are part of the human experience, that everybody, including our children, need to learn and speak honestly about, and have those feelings, and to be able to trust the people they share them with. He was unwavering in his commitment to the value of kindness in the face of a world that often seems intent on devising new ways of being mean. Mean is easy, mean is lazy, and doesn't take very much effort. But what does take effort is being kind, being patient, being respectful. At a time when civility, telling the truth, treating others the way you wish to be treated, is at sincere risk, when nastiness and mockery and disrespect seem to spread like a contagious disease, it's up to us to set a standard of behavior that we expect, and that's true everywhere across the district and across the community. We need to be the ones to provide models and exemplars for what we want to teach our children, and I do absolutely mean our children. We have to be the voice in our culture today. We have to be the ones that are willing to stand up and continue to share, uh, shared vision, collective responsibility, for each of our district's 4,100 students, and for each other. I would urge you, and the people here tonight, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but if you're listening at home or you're new to a board meeting, I urge you to get involved in the schools, to get involved in the town of Nutley, to speak to your neighbors, even just to smile at someone you don't know. Doesn't cost anything, doesn't take you any extra time, and you don't have to do anything very sensational to make a difference. Just show the best of who you are every day, show the best of what Nutley is every day, and if we keep sharing that with others, we make a difference for ourselves. So, thank you. I am gonna just go back since, um, I did introduce you before, and I'm sorry that I missed you, but since we have you again, I'm going to introduce you again, maybe, maybe not. So this is our student representative to the Board of Education, Zohar Ahmed, and I already talked about you being a senior, and I already talked about you being the student council president, and that you're gonna be the voice and the student perspective with us this year, and welcomed you to the Board of Education. But I'd really love if you'd talk about some of the other things that you're involved with, and what you hope to do as a board member.
Okay, so, basically, we've had a really busy start of the school year this year. First thing that's coming up on the 21st is the Homecoming Dance, and last year, it was a bigger success than it's been in like a while, so this year, our intent is to kind of take that and expand it a little bit more. So a little bit more detail on the Homecoming Dance is that it's going from 6:30 to 9:30. It's like, it's semi-casual. We want students to feel comfortable, but we also want them to dress a little bit fancier because it's motivation for them to go. Another thing that we've got coming up is a barbecue and a parade, and besides that, let me just sneak up my notes, I'm sorry.
I used to know.
Okay, also, so the week from September 24th to 28th, we're gonna have our first Spirit Week. So today, what we actually did is that we had a student council meeting, and we took a poll for students to see what kind of days they would actually like to participate in Spirit Week, because over the years, we've seen kind of like a dwindling in school spirit, so one of our things that we want to do this year is kind of get back on track with that, so polls really help with that. Some of the days that we're gonna keep are Decades Day, because that's been really consistent, and right now, we're seeing like a surge of people wanting to dress like the 80s, the 90s, but...
There's no one gay that is, we'll just show up next year.
But to kind of balance that, we're also having Mean Day, which is about internet humor and dressing up like internet friends, so we're kind of balancing it out. Um, other than that, September 28th is also the Senior Cruise, and we have a half-day on November 6th, so what's happened recently is that we've gotten rid of the decathlon because it's just been giving us trouble in these past couple of years. So what we're gonna do instead is that we still want to have that school spirit and grades interacting, so we're gonna break it down, and we're gonna have little mini-events. So for example, we have a half-day coming up, we might have a scheduled sports session. For example, we decide that we want volleyball, or we want soccer. So grades can participate in that singular event throughout the school day instead of having a whole thing, because events like that are more trouble to handle. So, right now, what we're doing with that day is that we haven't picked out a specific sport, we're still grading out to our peers to see what would kind of maximize attendance, to see like what there is the interest in, like from the student body, and that's about it.
Well, thank you, and again, welcome to the board.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our board secretary for Mrs. Karen Eames.
Thank you. Welcome back, it's nice to have so many of you here. We actually have a board meeting tonight, which is really nice. One of the things that happened early on in the school year, unfortunately, was that a section of the high school auditorium ceiling came down. No one was in the auditorium enough at times, so we immediately took action to investigate the matter. We had our architects and engineers in to determine what caused the problem. We contacted our insurance agent and filed a claim. We had an insurance adjuster out to take a look at the auditorium and to assess the damage. We have had a contractor onboard ready to start the removal of the ceiling. At the same time, we filed a letter with the county superintendent requesting that this project be designated as an emergency, so that we could expedite the removal and replacement of the ceiling as soon as possible. We are currently looking at a very strong possibility of having this work done during Columbus Day weekend, when there will be no staff or students in the building. It would start immediately on a half-day after everyone is gone. Air sampling will be conducted during the entire time, and the results we should have back this evening, within a couple of days, the, uh, after Columbus Day. I'm also working with Dr. Riley and Mr. Doyes and Mr. Nicolette on determining the type of seal, acoustical ceiling that we would like to have installed in the auditorium, as well as lighting. So the auditorium eventually will get freshly painted, the paneling will come down off of the walls, finally it won't look like 1980. I'm the baby then, and we hope to be able to return the auditorium as soon as possible back. I know the staff has been making some great adjustments. It's a loss of valuable space to everyone in the high school, but we appreciate everyone's patience and working with us so that we can get this project expedited and done, and have a beautiful look for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eames. Before we get into the committee reports, there's actually a couple of announcements that I wanted to make a little earlier that I should attend to. I just wanted to bring everyone's here attention to two very specific things that I wanted to mention tonight. I wanted to have a moment of silence for the passing of Mr. Totorio. I just found out that he passed away. The other went to surgery. They believed that he was going to be okay, and ultimately, he did pass away. Charlie is gonna give us a few words on his behalf, and then I'd like to have Michelle come up and just say a few words.
Thank you. I'm humbled to speak about my, uh, speak about my friend Vincent Totorio. If you didn't know him as a teacher, if you didn't know him as a coach, you missed a lot. He was, he was Nutley as far as I'm concerned. I played golf today with a lot of the football players from Nutley, some of the coaches, Mario Caciulli, was prostate cancer tournament was today, and Vincent Totorio was always there. He was always the person that we would walk up and talk to, reminisce about the old days. He was Mr. Nutley. He was an outstanding teacher in our, in our high school, an outstanding tennis coach. I miss him dearly, and he was a credit to, to you as teachers, and a credit, a credit to Nutley, and I'm, I'm gonna miss him terribly.
Thank you. I also heard that he was one heck of a lightbulb. That was one of the other pieces that I found out. Come on up, Michelle, thank you.
I'm just gonna echo Charlie's statements. I agree, I actually was a student of Mr. Totorio's Algebra 1 and Algebra 2. My son had him as a teacher and loved him as much as I did. My brother had him, he's truly a nutty guy to see, and he truly will be missing. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, a former board member and former past president, Mr. Thomas Bizano, lost his daughter last week, so our hearts go out to him as well, to his family at this time, and I just wanted to make everyone aware of that as well. Thank you. Okay, and we're gonna move over to our academic report with Mr. Valsama, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic, uh, the academic committee, the academic committee met Thursday, September 13th, from 6:00 p.m. At 6:00 p.m., the group reviewed Schedule A and draft mathematics and world library curriculum. Mr. Vanian and Mr. Dole also shared the extended day parent handbook, an updated committee on enrichment options that will begin in October. The committee also reviewed resolutions, including additions to the light transition program. Mr. Vanian shared an option 2 contract as well. The group also reviewed proposal for professional learning in the area of health and wellness for the physical education staff, and field trips and professional development requests we're also discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Valsama. We're gonna move over to Ms. Russo for the finance committee notes.
Yes, Mr. President, Finance Committee met on September 11th. Mr. Nicolette shared the schedule of summer work that took place in each building this year, as well as an update on pending work orders. We discussed the replacement of the water heater at the middle school, the upcoming big relief order at Radcliffe School, and punch list items still remaining at Washington School entrance. Committee also discussed the installation of a fence along the new concrete walkway at Washington School. Mr. Nicolette provided an update on the high school auditorium ceiling replacement, as well as scheduling the renewal of the existing ceiling. Mrs. Jaimans and Mr. Marmore reviewed the, should that be September?
Yes.
September 17th, resolutions including transfers and change order renewals. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 25th.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. The administration committee did not meet, and the policy committee did not meet. And we are moving into the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments. Our only resolutions are addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation, 601, allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic of interest. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Ms. Kukuzza before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to give her, please step forward. See?
Good evening, Mr. Carticella. How are you? 49 Yanacor Place here in Nutley. My question is regarding the referendum.
So, we're gonna, we'll move the resolutions, and then when we talk about all student matters, you can come up and ask that question. It'll be, yeah, once we get through the resolutions, you'll be able to come up and ask that question.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Dear seats, if anybody wants to sit down, over here in the front, on the right. Okay, Mr. Valsama, would you take that academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I approve academic resolutions 1 through 8, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzza.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Kozinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I approve administration resolutions 1.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzza.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mr. Klein, would you take mine, yes, please?
Mr. President, I approve finance resolutions 1 through 18, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzza.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Mrs. Dancheck-Morton, would you take personnel, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I approve personnel resolution 1, as written.
Circle. Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzza.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. Ms. Sherman, would you take policy, please?
Mr. President, I approve policy resolution number 1.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schillerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carticella?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on school-related matters. Our regulation allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Ms. Kukuzza before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Okay, we'll try again. Okay, so Mr. Carticella, regarding the referendum, I'm eager for all the people on Yanacor Place to be, are wondering when, if, and if, there are going to be meetings to update us on what's going on?
We are planning to have open houses at the schools. We'll be flowing out information through our website, as well as the social media feeds, and we're gonna engage wherever we can, whether it's the library, the, any of the public areas, where we can actually have drawings, um, to have those discussions, and I'm gonna encourage everyone that if you have certain questions that you need answers to, please don't hesitate to call us as well. We will be feeding that information out as much as we can.
And will they be happening anytime soon?
Yes. Well, this is what I was gonna say, this is the start, so that was part of the board update. We've already transitioned the webpage to go from 2017 to 2018. We posted the ballot questions, so now it's just a process of just getting that information. We have the architects working on the PDFs that we're gonna be posting up as well. Been through pretty quickly, only because we were waiting for the state letters to come back to us, giving us the approvals to move forward, so we were in a crunch of time because we had to make sure that we filed with, with the county as well, so we had a limited amount of time to do that.
Okay, so, we can expect something soon?
Correct.
Since the election is less than two months away?
Correct.
Okay.
The architect will be at those...
Yes, yes, we would have, whenever we can have them there, the architects.
And obviously, there are modifications from...
Um, there's not very, there's not very many modifications. What we've done is we've actually split the referendum into two...
Right, I agree.
Exactly, exactly what we spoke about tonight. So, everything is the same.
Well, it is less money.
It is less money. We, we shifted the secure entrance at Yanacor, so if, when you see those particular PDFs, you'll see that the secure entrance is going to be up on the side where the multi, the multipurpose space was going to be. And by having two questions, it made it more, it made it more valuable to us and more cost-effective to have that secure. to have that secure entrance, and we could always add an multipurpose space later on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, um, any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. Now, therefore, we consult the Board of Education recess to close executive session at this time to discuss student matters, personnel, and contracts. The authorities offered the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meetings of the Board of Education, but when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Do we have a motion?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.